Councilmember Chow.
She's muted.
Here.
Councilmember Sinks.
Here.
Councilmember Willie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Paul.
Evening, here.
Mayor Sharp.
Here. Wonderful. Have a little bit of an issue because we went so overtime on the study session. I would like a vote to move the city manager's report up because she has somebody from the county to speak on this and that person cannot stay past eight o'clock or I'm sorry, past 7:30. So I would like a vote to move the city manager update for communications. So I will make a motion to move item one, city manager update to be now.
Councilmember Chow.
No, there was, I need a second.
Yes.
I'll second you all.
Okay, go ahead.
Aye. Okay, councilmember Sinks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul. Or councilmember Willie, I'm sorry.
Yes, aye.
Vice Mayor Paul.
Aye.
Mayor Sharp.
Aye. Okay, very good. So Deb, you can take it away on your emergency response effort.
Okay, so we changed it because it includes something more than COVID and will do so for the near term. For COVID-19, the statewide, statewide governor Newsom has changed the COVID-19 response framework to one of a tiered approach focused on business sectors and reopening requirements. There are four tiers, purple, red, orange, and yellow from most restrictive to least restrictive. As of September 8th, 2020, Santa Clara County has moved into the red tier and will likely stay there for a bit. Although Santa Clara County is in the red tier, it continues to be more restrictive than the state for indoor gatherings and activities. So that's where it kind of gets a little bit confusing if you hear anything. Two main measurements they're still using are cases per 100,000 people and the positivity rate. Cupertino currently has 106 cases, still the best in the county. Donation, blood donation event was today. We had 54 people in with antibody testing included. COVID-19 testing event tomorrow, September 16th, from 9:30 to 4:00 for those interested at the senior center. This testing is for everyone, not just seniors, despite the testing location. It's by appointment, but there's plenty of room for walk-ins. The reason I'm pushing this so hard is we had 231 tests administered during the last event, but 750 appointments. So we're, we have a plenty of capacity. The next appointments in October are again scheduled for the first and third Wednesday of the month. Parks and Recreation and Public Works, we are opening playgrounds as of September 21, 2020, along with county guidance. A couple of interesting statistics, we had in the last week, free exercise classes, 203 attendees, fee-based exercise classes, 124. 194 emergency bags passed out on Friday, September 11th via Cupertino Cares. Infotino, college crash course, 125 total participants. And this was on Sunday, the 13th. As well as 865 people playing on the tennis courts and 649 at the BlackBerry Farm Golf Course. Impressive usage stats, I think. Let's see. Law enforcement, the new change here is the county has hired 15 or 20 code enforcement officers to handle COVID-related complaints. The new website for this is SCCCOVIDconcerns.org. That's SCC, as in Santa Clara County, COVIDconcerns.org. Last week, we experienced extremely hot weather. As the fires start to reach containment, the CZU more recently was at 76% contained and the others are almost fully contained. We can expect poor air quality for a bit. I'm watching, we're watching the AQIs. We think there will be additional heat events and are able to open our cooling center, which saw approximately 91 people over the course of the four days that we had it open last week. And are considering clean air respits. We're looking at this for when the AQI is above 200 and/or coupled with heat, extreme heat. And we are looking at airnow.gov. Many people look at purple air and that's okay. However, that's a crowdsourcing mechanism. Some of those sensors, we can't tell how they were installed and some of them are indoor sensors. So we tend to rely on, on airnow.gov. And more good news, we are just now entering the PSS season. An update on the homeless encampments. Everybody has seen a lot of the back and forth I've had with community members. Outreach has been continuous even prior to the shelter in place. The county of Office of Supportive Housing has been visiting regularly since the beginning of July, 2020. We had a fatality at, of a Cupertino resident due to a hit-and-run accident after visiting the encampment. Extreme heat events coupled with extremely poor air quality has hit all of us and has affected the encampment members the most because they live outside. And we have impending construction activities. For about a week, a large dumpster was placed near the 280 South encampment to help the encampment members get rid of larger debris that could not fit in the regular debris bins or boxes, sorry. On September 4th, the sheriff's department let the encampment members know that a relocation, relocation effort was coming. And on September 13th, notices were posted at the encampment. The relevant agencies will continue to do outreach throughout this entire period. And this is the part that we are honored to have the acting director for the Office of Supportive Housing, Ms. Consuelo Hernandez, to talk about part of the process that I'm just not able to talk about. She, she owns that process. So, Consuelo, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, members of the city council. I hope you can hear me clearly.
Oh, yes.
Yes, thank you so much to your staff and reaching out to the county for assistance. You know, the Office of Supportive Housing tries to provide its expertise to all of the cities in the county to address challenges or issues with encampments. And my team has been going out there since July to provide the households, sorry, the, the folks that are in the encampments with options to lead them to a pathway for housing. Some of those examples include providing them with the offer or option to enter one of our congregate shelters or non-congregate shelters that we've established because of COVID. One of the challenges, of course, during this time is making sure that people remain safe and that they're practicing social and physical distancing, distances required by our health officer. And, and through that, we are actually managing a little over 11 motels across the county. And depending if those individuals meet the FEMA requirements for isolation, then we can place them into motels. Alternatively, we've also set up a number of congregate shelters. So if you think about your more traditional, large room setting with a bed or a cot, that those household, those individuals have also been offered that assistance. We've also been working in collaboration with the property owner and the property owner has also provided a, some level of financial assistance for those individuals. And through our office, really working on the engagement and building a rapport with individuals that are living in the encampments, which is the first step in trying to engage with the unhoused population, is getting them comfortable and getting to know our staff. They were out there today again and are positive that we can provide the folks that are staying in the encampments with some of the supplies that they've requested and continue to work with both the property owner and your staff to make sure that the situation is handled most appropriately for them. Happy to, happy to answer any questions.
And Consuelo, can you say a little bit about, I think there is some concern that the shelters are, you know, a place where community spread could happen. And my understanding is that the shelters are set up to CDC guidance and anybody who is symptomatic has been moved to isolation and quarantine.
That is correct. We are following the CDC guidance. We took action very quickly when the pandemic started. We actually had one of our primary shelter providers who has a staff member that is familiar with infectious diseases and, and you know, has provided expertise in this area. So one of the first actions that we took is we reduced the capacity in all of our shelters to provide a 10-foot separation between beds. And that reduced our capacity by about 287 shelter beds across the county. So we lost a few shelter beds at the beginning of the pandemic, but we quickly increased that to closer to 800 because of the congregate shelter and the non-congregate shelter that we've been able to set up with the hotels and the new shelters that were set up in the city of San Jose. And I'm, I'm happy to report that through the pandemic, we have not seen an outbreak in our homeless community in terms of the high number of people that are, that are positive. And out of everybody that we're currently assisting with housing placement, about 50% of them are unhoused and 50% of them are housed, but don't have a means of isolation if they test positive for COVID.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I do see, before we move to city council questions, we do have one person from the public that wanted to speak on this item. Rhoda Frue, welcome, Rhoda.
How about this? Can you hear me?
Yeah, there you go.
And it's actually, I mistyped, it's Frye, and I meant to speak during public comment. Apologize.
Oh, are you talking about oral communications?
Correct. Yes.
Oh, okay. All right. So yeah, I'll call on you then. Thank you. All right. So we can bring it back to council then. There's no members of the public to speak on this. Does anyone have any questions for Deb or Consuela?
I would just like to say, it's not quite a question, but talking to a resident about the homeless situation. And he made the comment that he'd really like to see us work on some type of city work program to provide some type of employment, groundskeeping and things like that that can help these people move out of the homeless situation. I'll talk about that more later in reports out.
Okay. Anyone else on council wish to speak? I don't see any hands raised. Okay. So thank you, Deb. We can now move backwards, back to oral communications. So oral communications is for items not on the agenda. You get three minutes. We can ask limited number of questions, but we really can't discuss the issue because it is not agendized. However, we do have the option to put items on the agenda, on a future agenda. So we will open oral communications and I will move to attendees. Okay, now we're on to Rhoda Frye. And thank you for correcting your name there. Okay, well, are you there, Rhoda?
Oh, I'm muted by host.
No, I hear you now. You're there.
Great. All right. There is a landslide at Lehigh's Permanent Decree that is a threat to public health and safety. On February 13th, the water board stated, "We are concerned about the long-term stability of the Wemza, especially the Jager Yard area. County oversight of this issue is most appropriate, given the potentially significant health and safety concerns." And a Santa Clara County geologist's report warned on February 18th, "The Jager Yard landslide mass is moving towards Permanent Decree and its mass is sufficiently large to block the creek. Should this happen during winter months, the runoff of the Upper Watershed would likely pond, creating a new debris flow hazard to structures and residences downstream. I have emailed you those letters. Slope instability at the Jager Yard, also known as SubArea 3, has been monitored by Santa Clara County since at least 2015. Now it's called a landslide. Don't you think it's about time the county stop monitoring and start protecting the citizens of Cupertino and greater Santa Clara County and the Permanent Decree watershed? We're approaching the rainy season. The last thing we need is another disaster. I've gotten nowhere with county and once again, ask the state mining and geology board and the division of mining reclamation to intervene. Should the Jager Yard landslide move into the creek, the county and the state will have played a part in Lehigh's willful negligence. Thank you."
Okay, thank you, Rhoda. Public Works Director Lee, are you familiar with this issue?
Mayor, I am familiar with it and yeah.
So I mean, can you comment on what, is the county not doing anything or what?
That's my understanding from talking to the county regularly, that they, they are familiar with it. Their geologist is familiar with it and it's, it's part of their greater calculus of the reclamation plan amendment that they're considering now.
Okay, thank you. The next hand we have up is Jean Bedord. Welcome, Jean. Okay, Jean, I unmuted, I'm going to unmute you again. Okay, there you are. Go ahead.
Okay, good evening, Mayor Sharp and council members. Kirsten is going to put up my slides. Kirsten, my slide disappeared.
I'll pause the timer until this is up.
Can you maximize it?
What, disappeared?
Can we get it back?
It's working on it, Jean.
Ah, very good. Good evening, Mayor Sharp and council members. My name is Jean Bedord and I am a longtime resident. And for the past several years, I have attended every single council meeting, including those that ended at 4:00 a.m. I am here tonight to present a report card on the performance of this council, which I would rate as highly unsatisfactory. Next slide. This council claims to be transparent, but look at the record. In the last two years, there have been more closed-door meetings than meetings open to the public. Your performance has improved in 2020, but 2019 was abysmal. Then there are the meetings which go beyond midnight. Most residents would say that 11 o'clock is their upper limit, but this council likes to do their deliberations in the wee hours of the morning. How many residents are engaged at 1:00, 2:00, or 3:00 in the morning? I've been through all of the late nights and your decision-making product deteriorates at that hour. Next. Now let's talk about the cost of lawsuits by members of this council and their appointees. These are avoidable, yet look what they cost the city. This is taxpayer money. It's my money that this council has wasted on unnecessary legal actions. And next year doesn't look any better, since you've budgeted over $2 million for the city attorney. Next slide. Now let's look at where you are spending money to benefit residents. You paid your former city attorney more money than you're spending next year on library services. Mayor Sharp's appeal costs more than the city tenant eviction program. What are the values of this community? Shouldn't you be spending money for the benefit of residents and not full employment for lawyers? Isn't it time to change? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Could the city attorney explain to the resident why the council is required to have closed sessions? Because there seems to be some lack of understanding about that.
Closed sessions are called when there's threat of litigation that needs to be discussed without, in a way, in a manner that would prejudice the city's interests if it was discussed in open session. It's also, there are also closed sessions for real estate negotiations to provide direction to negotiators as well as negotiations about appointed staff salaries. There's performance evaluations for city manager and city attorney, which are overseen by the council and a number of other instances, bringing, considering bringing potential litigation to, to advance the city's interests are also reasons we've had closed sessions this last year.
Okay, great. Yeah, I think it's important that people understand that. I don't think we like having extra sessions anymore than anyone, but you know, sometimes they're, they're simply necessary for us to do.
The CT also took, helped, took a position on DACA bills to support that bill. That was also closed session because it was, we need to decide before we can be public about this kind of positions.
Right. Okay, I see one more hand up. Lisa Warren, welcome.
Thank you. So I hadn't planned to comment during oral, but having heard what I just heard from Ms. Bedord, I, I feel the need to comment. So the, the complaint about transparency and closed session meetings has been brought up by the same person in the past. And the city attorney at that point explained the same thing. So there, here we are, round two. Secondly, the comment about late meetings. You know, there, I haven't, I've been going, participating in things for 25 years in the city, out of the 34 that I have lived here. And it's always often the case that meetings go later than anyone would like them to. And yes, I agree, decisions are made at a time, later than they should be, when brains are fried. People rush good discussions in the interest of saving time, which I think is a mistake. So perhaps it's just your agendas are too chock full. But decisions being made at 2:00 in the morning to approve 2 million square feet of office space at Valco was not a good decision. It was not done right. But that was not this council. There's many, many other instances that could be brought up of late decisions on key things that some people like, some people don't. I'm not saying the situation is great, but to blame this council for that and not recognize that this has happened for decades is just flat out wrong. So I, I'm done.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Next, we have Jim Moore. Welcome, Jim.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, I had a couple of comments that I wanted to make earlier, but I was on my iPad and I didn't get a raised hand image to do that. This has to do with the homeless camps on North Wolf Road. I saw the notice today and it says that the, on the notice, that it's the notice to, in a sense, move from an illegal campsite. And yet all the discussions prior to this had to do with the homeless, in a sense, their tent camp. So I was a little surprised by that. I had two questions. One is that for these homeless people, they do have worldly belongings. Okay, just like we would have if we ended up on the street. How are those handled if they move into a shelter? And then the second, the residents have heard that as far as this movement, this eviction of these homeless residents, that there will be no laying on of hands. There will not be a forced eviction or forced move. And I just wanted to have somebody from the city clarify that that's the case, that even though the sheriff will be there and there'll be a contractor there, that no one will be forced by, in a sense, being held or whatever to leave. So I appreciate a clarification on that. Again, I wanted to do this earlier and put.
Okay, city manager Fong, can you comment on that?
Let me comment on the second piece of Mr. Moore's question. We can't, the city cannot force and will not force anybody to take services that we've offered, but they will be relocated. So he terms it an eviction. That's a strong statement for public property. But I would say there's a little confusion on Mr. Moore's part. So I'm trying to provide clarification that yes, they have to be relocated, but no, they don't. Like I can't force them to take housing. I can't force them to take any of the services that are, services that are being offered. That is their First Amendment right. I mean, their, their right to, human right to deny those. I would ask if she's still on. If Consuelo Hernandez is still on. I don't see her name anymore. And anybody else that can add anything to that answer. I forget the first question if Mr. Moore could.
There is a question about belongings.
Right, the possessions.
So the contractor that we have hired, the contractor we have hired as well as the others that have experience with these encampments is, they, the county was very happy with the contractor we selected because they know how to document and store their belongings. And so, and then you store them somewhere where it's appropriate, where they're safe, so they can get access to them when they want access to them. So yeah, there's, I don't think it's been done well other places, but we definitely have a contractor that's experienced in that and making sure that we document them properly.
Right, thank you. Next, we have Mooney. Welcome, Mooney. You have three minutes.
Hey, good evening, Mayor Sharp and council. I was not planning to talk at this time, but you know, after listening to one of the previous residents, I feel compelled to talk. So I might go a little bit off-script, pardon my language. So you guys are doing phenomenal job. The reason that, you know, I have high respect for you guys is, you know, you just, you know, go into details and hang in there till middle of the night or even 2:00 a.m., 3:00 a.m. Not because, you know, you want to cut some secret deals, but truly to serve the community. We really appreciate and admire what you're doing, right? And for somebody to be coming and accusing you of, you know, doing all the under-the-table deals, where the heck knew this person was when the 2 million square feet office space and unlimited height was given to the one developer at 2:00 a.m. in the morning? And that's not this council, as Lisa said. It's some other council. And there is a reason that that council is not here anymore. And by the way, this person that spoke, along with three other residents, colluded with the developer to fire a city attorney that cost a lot of money for the city. Where was that in that report? Right? So people have to stop smearing, okay? So there was a spare block that was being run called, you know, bittercupidino.org by some people. Now, nobody's going there, so now they're taking it to come and smear people here. You guys are doing a phenomenal job. Keep up the good work. Thank you for your service. I'm done.
Okay, thank you, Mooney. Next, we have Leana Crabtree. Welcome, Leana.
Good evening, mayor and council and staff. My name is Leana Crabtree. I'm a Cupertino resident. I, my question is related to the Wolf Road residents who are facing eviction on Monday, the 21st, which is just five days from today. And it is my understanding that, because you've shared this with us and thank you for being forthright with what you are, what's happening at the site. It's my understanding that the individuals have received some verbal offers for options. But at this time, I, I have not heard any confirmation that there have been any written offers for what options are truly available for them. And I'm concerned because we're getting very close to the 21st. And I'm concerned that there may be some expectations based on conversations that people are having that may not be realized because there's nothing in writing for these unhoused residents. Thank you.
Okay, Deb, can you comment on that? Whether these are, is it common for verbal agreements only or what, what's happening with that?
I'm gonna ask Ms. Hernandez to respond.
Oh, she's still here?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Council members. Yeah, we'd be happy to speak with the, the person who spoke now during public comment to walk them through our process. You know, typically when we are addressing an encampment issue that has a date certain of a goal for relocation, you know, there isn't a typical agreement that we execute with the encampment folks, but happy to walk through the options that we've provided. If there is a sense of, you know, if, if the person is offered a shelter bed or a motel, that happens rather quickly. We try to mobilize and move them within 48 hours. So if there's some concern about the process, happy to set up a meeting and talk through that. So far, the folks that we have provided assistance and offers, they have not specifically requested something in writing. So I'm curious to learn from you what you're hearing from folks on the ground. And, and you know, and I say that very vaguely because it is in our practice to talk specifically about individuals in a public setting. So it'd be something worth discussing privately if there's a specific concern about any one of the, of the folks that are in, living in the encampment.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, just one tag point, the, the, the written notice that was posted and handed included an available shelter for people to go to.
Okay, I understand. So Consuela, what percentage, not of this particular encampment, but in general, what percentage of people that are offered other housing, except, and what percentage decline it and move somewhere else?
I'm sorry that I don't have that data in front of me, Mayor. Happy to provide that to you and the rest of the council on a different day, if it's information that we collect. You know, the, the county as a provider of service and safety net, it's our goal to make sure that folks across the county are provided with the service. We, and we partner with local jurisdictions to assist with situations like the encampment on Wolf Road. So it isn't our practice to typically collect information related to encampments and those actions unless it's a specific program. So I don't have the information off the top of my head, but happy to provide it after.
All right. Really appreciate you coming to our meeting today to speak. This is a issue of concern to a lot of residents. You know, we are trying to be compassionate. But I know there's a lot of concern about the safety of people, you know, living on, you know, on the on-ramp, right by the on-ramp to the freeway and especially with construction coming. So I appreciate Deb's efforts and your efforts in helping us address this issue. Okay, we are going backwards now. Um, no, now we are going forward again. We finished oral. So now we are on to report on committee assignments. Who would like to go first? How about Rod?
Okay. Silicon Valley Clean Energy Met, we've moved forward with prior plans. I don't think we ratified our strategic plan and other things. We, I suppose I'd like to spend a little time talking about the consensus we arrived at on the VTA SR 85 Policy Advisory Board. We had a unanimous vote along the lines of the proposal that I've been discussing here, which would have a dedicated transit lane in the median, a newly constructed dedicated transit lane from Almondton Valley where Light Rail goes north, all the way up to Mountain View in each direction. So we wouldn't be taking away a car lane. We would add a new lane. And the proposal also includes four inline stops. So a limited number of stops. And the point of the inline stops is we'd allow passengers to board and onboard and the bus to, to get on its route. So for example, there's an overpass adjacent to Deans College. This overpass would have a ramp up to it and a ramp down from it, both northbound and southbound, and would allow loading and unloading efficiently for the, for the bus. This is a flexible system that would allow for people, buses to come from various arteries that tran, that intersect Highway 85. And we imagine both public and private buses using this facility. Today, there are no public buses. If you're a, a school teacher or a service worker, you have no transit option from that vast spread in the Almondton Valley, that vast area, which is South San Jose and, and frankly, places further south. You just don't have a transit option to get up the corridor. If however, we, we get this done, we would be able to toll or charge the private buses to subsidize public bus service. So that's the idea. The Measure B 2016 funding that we got, $350 million can be compared to VTA's estimate for this facility, which would be, they, they pencil out at 352 million. In other words, we're right in the ballpark. Now there's some other costs, right, for engineering and whatnot, but we're basically in the right ballpark to, to put a capital improvement in that would permanently favor high occupancy vehicles. And I'm not talking about cars of one or two or three or four people. We're talking shuttles such as our Via, for example, or a VTA bus, or if VTA can't see its way to providing service, I, you know, people have talked about the idea that we could form a JPA of, of the cities of the willing, probably Mountain View, Sunnyvale among them, and maybe private employers that would go in on helping us get the improvements done sooner so that we could, we could get this done faster. We know the traffic is going to return with a vengeance. That we suffer because it spills out onto our surface streets. So the idea here is to increase the capacity of the corridor in favor transit riders. So buses going whizzing by provide a, an incentive. So we get, we had a unanimous vote by the PAB for this proposal. It immediately ran into some opposition from the Mayor of San Jose when this was discussed at the Capital Programs Committee meeting. There was a memo that Jason Baker of the Silicon Valley Leadership Group wrote that didn't form, didn't, wasn't part of frankly, the narrative of VTA staff. VTA staff have not been supported. They say there's only five boardings per hour that they can possibly see with this. Jason Baker, in his memo, having polled companies, told us, told VTA on August 10th in the memo, that in 2019, there were 5,600 riders per day. Average daily ridership on a weekday, 5,600. So that demonstrates that the narrative is false. This is a transit corridor. You can do it if you're willing to provide the service. So Jason has become an ally in trying to convince the VTA board. And this will come to a head on October 1st at the VTA full board meeting at 5:30, where they decide whether they're going to advance the $2.5 million that it would take to move to the preliminary engineering phase. So we're asking the board to accept the recommendation made unanimously and move this project forward. So, so basically, the promise of transit that was first made to us in 1992 with a countywide transit plan, where Light Rail was envisioned for this corridor, as well as many other places. And again in 2000, when Measure A passed with the, the good support of people in the West Valley, will finally be fulfilled, albeit with a somewhat different project. This is not a lot of money. It's probably one turn of the screw on a tunnel that, you know, brings Bart to San Jose. The, the machine that bores that hole. But you know, somehow San Jose may say to us, well, we don't see it, or since it's a 30-year measure, we'll put you out in the last 10 years. We can't afford this right now. Go on. It's, it's time for us to stand up and say, we won this funding in, in 2016. We have a unanimous recommendation of the PAB, and I'm, I'm hoping all of you will stand with us and insist that the money be used to, to, the money that's budgeted in VTA's current budget for capital projects be released so that we can move on with preliminary engineering work. That's my report.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Darcy.
Uh, yeah, okay, hold on. Let me see. I'm gonna try to share my screen. Can y'all see that? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, so I'll send this to Kirsten. This is my one pager on contacts. Three meetings. One was the Silicon Valley Regional Interoperability Order Directors Meeting. I can't really disclose details, but we had a closed session to interview prospective candidates for our executive director. And for the sake of readability, I've moved the next two onto a separate slide. So the second meeting I'll report is our Mayors and Commissioners Meeting, which happens on a monthly basis. This one happened on September 9th. I was there in place of Mayor Scharf, who was participating in a county task force on the issue of homelessness. So it's really good to, to see work going forward there. We have a lot on our plate, and I think it's really visible from all the various contacts we have through our commissions. This is not by any means comprehensive as to what was discussed. I just picked a couple of items from each of the commissions. Fine Arts, there's the Young Artist Contest, the Mural Project is, you know, going forward. And Sustainability from, from Gary, you know, they haven't been meeting during Shelter in Place. However, prospectively upcoming this year, in the next year, something on plastics. I, I would highly recommend Frontline's documentary on this topic from March of this year. It's, it's really fascinating and it's an up-to-date, you know, summary of what's been going on. So this is a very topical and very important thing that we can be handling at this point, which is, you know, what to do with all this incredible amount of plastic waste in the world. Our Climate Action Plan, which is very good, we'll get updates. From planning, Kitty was there. She was talking about bird safe design, as well as dark skies, as, and hillside exemption for residents occurred during the past month. From Teen Commission, we had Aniga. She talked about the Hat Cupertino event. Pizza and Politics was last week, all virtual, of course. Library, Amanda Woe, she talked about two different divides that we're facing right now, especially with Shelter in Place and everything that's going on. There's a senior divide and a digital divide. One item of note with the city, curbside hours for drop-off, no, for pickup of your reserve books, rather, are now 3:00 to 7:00 PM on Wednesday and Thursday to accommodate people that are working and 1:00 to 5:00 PM the other days. Very good program. Parks and Rec is, Carol was representing the commission. And it seems like we're doing a really good job of reaching out to our residents with respect to follow-ups on the Parks and Rec Master Plan. We're allocating $200,000 for all parks in the upcoming year with regard to improvements based upon the master plan recommendations, but also based upon public outreach. So it, it, that's not, not a lot for 17 parks, but you know, just overall, the package looks really good. Community gardens are going forward. And keep in mind that we did allocate a, a good amount for community gardens outside of the main gardens in McCollum Ranch. The off-leash dog period, trial period ended in July and it's been extended until next July. It, it went really well. There were no complaints. On public safety, we had Tiffany. Vehicle burglaries went, did go up from June to July. There is an annual public safety forum, which is excellent. However, it's not happening this year because of the fact that, of course, we can't have live meetings, but they very thoughtfully have broken it up into multiple sessions and will be online with each item having a particular topic. So mental health and the organization NAMI will be the topic for October. In Bike Pen, we had Mooney. He was speaking about Bullinger, the Bullinger Road Safety Study, which is going to be a major item in the Stevens Creek Bikeland Project, which of course is, is also a very significant channel through our city. On the Technology Information and Communications Commission, Makesh talked about adaptive traffic signaling, climate and noise monitoring, which are basically, you know, various types of sensors. And we'll see as the technology gets, you know, better for data speeds, that these are going to, you know, make a really significant change in our community and at large. I found very interesting that they have a fiber optic and wireless master plan for the city, and there's going to be a vendor report later this month in, in September. On the Housing Subcommittee, as, as you know, we have a subcommittee between two members of council and a couple of members of the Housing Commission. And so that looks to be proceeding well. It is a brown acted subcommittee, and so we are going forward, but, but carefully, of course. And then there was a brief discussion on developmentally disabled housing, and we continue to look for a prospective site. So that's good to keep on the radar. And then finally, we didn't have a representative from Audit Committee, other than myself, and I am on Audit Committee. So I, I just wanted to let people know that the internal audit work by Moss Adams is proceeding in the aftermath of, you know, the, our, our discovery in 2018 of the embezzlement that had been happening from 2000 to 2014, which predates most of us on council, including myself. But you know, the upshot of it is that our internal audit work is, is proceeding and it's, seems to be going, going really well. Our financially related milestones, which we're behind on, again, prior to most of us on council, are, are really being met in a timely way at, at this point. And then finally, the third meeting I attended, that was a council obligation, a committee assignment, was the VTA Policy Advisory Committee meeting. A little bit of context, how this is structured. The decisions on our Valley Transit Authority are, are made by the board, the Board of Directors. We don't have anyone from Cupertino there, but the Policy Advisory Committee is, you know, essentially a direct set of representatives from all of the cities of the county, giving some input into, into the board's decisions. So some of the key points that I saw that I'd like to report back to the community, the SR 237 express lanes, that was a very interesting point. I, I know express lanes, you know, we have the whole spectrum of opinion with regard to them. But they do seem to be certainly economically efficacious. During the Shelter in Place, they actually shut down the toll collecting for two and a half months from mid-March to the end of May. However, if you look at the year-over-year, the fiscal year, fiscal, fiscal year revenues, in fiscal year 19, they, they, they only collected about 1.3 million from those lanes. In fiscal year 20, that just ended in July, they collected almost 3.3 million. And so despite not having those two and a half months, those express lanes have really caught on with regard to usage. And it was interesting, they, they broke out a map and it looks like that they're, you know, kind of long-term, longer-term. They're, they're looking at kind of an express lane ring, if you will, around the Bay Area with all the various interconnectors, including 237. So that's something to keep an eye on. The, it's, of course, that's not a done deal. There are a lot of transit agencies that would need to interconnect. Item eight was very fascinating. It's their next generation high-capacity transit study. And I, I, I think, I think it's fair to say that they turned this over very quickly. So what's happening is that San Jose had an RFI, a request for information for, to various vendors out there in, in the private sector. They, they basically asked everyone, give us some proposals for connecting Deardon Station over to the airport, as well as essentially connecting San Jose to, to Deans College and Cupertino down Stevens Creek Boulevard, including Santa Clara. And they, we, we have a lot of private, interesting, cutting-edge proposals there. Now VTA is kind of getting into the mix here, and they're doing it rather quickly. And, and they're basically saying, look, we're not talking about any specific vendors, and we're, we're not talking about. we're not talking about any specific vendors and we're, we're not talking about any, you know, kind of like these cutting-edge proprietary technologies. Um, a, and so when you listen to them talk about this, it, it almost seems kind of, you know, gravitating towards something like bus rapid transit. Um, but I think we're in a really critical time right now because um we need to be able to let them know, especially through these types of mechanisms, look, we're interested in, in, in very long-term solutions right on the cutting edge that will, you know, hold us in good stead for many, many decades and even generations. And so I, 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 you know, thought that we had a really good discussion there on this item. Um, and, and so that's kind of kicking it off. Uh, they're coming back with their study, which is uh done, you know, again relatively quickly in the next couple of months or so. Uh, this is a key thing, the next item, the Transit Service Plan. They do this on a regular basis. Um, it's either annual or biannual. Um, but there are a couple of public input dates uh that are very important. If members of the public are interested in getting kind of real on the ground, you know, this is the VTA service, i.e. the buses. Uh, and, and this is what we need. Uh, so September 23rd at 6:00 PM, September 29th at 11:00 AM. I've put the link uh to the VTA website where you can get more information on this process and meetings, uh which will be in the one pager that I send to Kirsten. Uh, and then finally, as kind of an interesting, you know, thing to note, um during council, uh during staff reports for, for the VTA PAC, a staff member mentioned that there um is going to be an automated electric bus pilot, uh which, which I, I, I thought was really interesting. Um, and it is occurring uh in Santa Clara County. Um, and he, he wasn't absolutely sure, but he thought it was possibly at the Palo Alto VA Hospital. And then finally, um, I guess, you know, one thing I'll, I'll just say really quickly, uh mayor, uh with regard to uh one of the uh assignments that I have, it's not really a committee assignment, but with the library expansion, I, I, I do want to say that members of the community uh with the support of this council have been working really hard, you know, over, over time to make sure that we have, you know, a really uh great amenity. It's $10 million. It's, it's not an insignificant amount of money. Uh, but at the same time, you know, this council has done a lot to basically say, look, you know, we want to be able to deliver these types of amenities to the community. If we're talking about a $70 million city call, let's take it one step at a time. Let's put the uh community first. So I thank you for the time and again, I'll send this over to uh Kirsten for uh council and public consumption. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Um, Councilmember Chow, do you have a report?
Hi. So we had a Legislative Review Committee meeting on the 2nd of September that the legislative uh season ended on August 31st. And the legislators rushed until midnight in October 31st to pass bills. There were a few bills that they made an amendment and couldn't rush back to the originating uh legislator committee to wrote again. So some of the housing bills that were being pushed, which the city opposed, didn't pass. However, they are likely to come back uh early September for a second round. And then they, they might like 11/20.
December. I think it's early December.
Early December, like 11/20 that will um forcefully upzone on certain single-family sites to duplex or, and permit for units on the same site. And I think we, personally, I support that we should consider some sites for this kind of uh subdivision, but such this, this should be made by the city because every city, every part of the city is different. So that's uh something to watch out. And then there is an interesting agenda item is a new ballot being proposed of, a new initiative being proposed for the statewide ballot on 2022. This um initiative uh is at the Attorney General, they, the Attorney General is writing up the title and summary. They will have that done by the end of September and then the proponents will start to collect signatures. They have six months to collect. This initiative would uh try to take back uh ensure that certain decisions on city zoning and planning can only be determined by the city so that state legislators would not intervene on some of the city zoning decisions. Unfortunately, this initiative applies only to charter cities and which Cupertino is not one. So it doesn't quite apply to Cupertino.
Right. Um, we do always have that option to become a charter city.
Yes, that's true. So we are have more control of our own uh law. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, John.
Oh, yeah, with, with the COVIDs, uh some of the committees still aren't meeting and so I took the opportunity being the alternate on the Route 85. Rod did a great job of uh explaining where they're at now and it was really good to hear that they, they made a uh a decision and hopefully we will get transit moving down that corridor. I'll leave that one at that. And then I did attend the Legislative uh Review and uh watched that. And things are starting to pick up again, uh now with COVID uh somewhat uh here for a while. So the school two-plus-two meeting will be starting up again and it'll be tomorrow. So I'll leave it at that.
All right, great. So I will, to be brief, Liang mentioned Legislative Review Committee meeting. Um, you know, by hook or crook, um, the cities um did pretty well in terms of the housing bills that were being pushed by real estate investors and um the people that are opposed to affordable housing. So we, there were nine bad bills. Seven of them didn't make it to the governor. Two of them did. Um, I know we've written, as most cities have, written letters urging him to veto those bills. Uh, we will see what happens there. But as Liang said, a lot of these bad bills, they will be back and they'll be back over and over again. Um, one of the bills that failed this year, 902, failed the previous year is SB 50, failed, failed the previous year as SB 827, but um they don't give up. There's a lot of money at stake here and um the people backing these bills are, are going to continue to try to uh promote them.
Sorry, can I clarify one thing on?
Sure, sorry.
So the reason that a lot of people are against this bill is also this bill does not require a single unit of affordable housing. And then so it will all be market rate as has happened in Berkeley, one side subdivided into four units and all four units are twice as much as the original unit.
Right.
And uh we have residents, council members from um areas where it's predominantly uh minority neighbors, single-family neighborhood. They are very concerned this kind of bill will gentrify their neighborhood.
Okay, let me finish, please. Um, uh, what was I gonna? Oh, the, and unfortunately, the bill by Senator Bell that would have provided funding for affordable housing, the only housing bill that would have done that, um, didn't even make it out of committee. Last year it made it to the governor and the governor vetoed it. This year it didn't even make it to the governor. So I appreciate Senator Bell's efforts. You know, he's termed out. He won't get, won't get a third chance on this bill. Um, but if we're serious about building affordable housing, then then we really need the money to come, come from the state to do that. It's not going to come from individual cities. They, you know, they, they just don't have that revenue. Um, the other thing I'll talk about, I was on the uh, the new county unhoused task force subcommittee. Um, that meeting, we didn't really get a chance to say anything. It was a presentation. Um, Cindy Chavez interrupted. It was a 57 PowerPoint slide presentation. And I want, finally, um Supervisor Chavez interrupted, um and uh we didn't see the same, the, the whole presentation, but um let me see if I can bring up part of it and share my screen here. Um, let's see. Where is that? Share screen. Okay. Um, okay. So this, can you see that? Um, is that up there?
Yes.
Okay. So this was one of the interesting things to me, the systemic factors driving homelessness because we really want to get to the root causes of homelessness and it's really an income issue for the most part. Yes, there are people that, you know, will not, you know, are unable to work or that have mental illness or addiction issues. But the real issue is people just can't, are not making enough money for housing, to, to rent or purchase housing. And I read an article today in one of the Sacramento papers. They're renovating a hotel in Sacramento that was single-room occupancy. So these 325 square foot rooms are going to cost about $750,000 each to get ready. And it's, they, someone said, well, you can buy a whole house for that in many counties in California. So we're facing the issue that affordable housing is not cheap to provide and uh I mentioned Jim Bell's bill. The mon, the money really has to come from somewhere. Um, if, if we're going to be serious about this, this, uh fixing this issue, uh it's probably not going to come from our BMR percentage because as we've seen, the developers that have approved plans are actually not building them. So we don't even get our BMR. We're going to have to build affordable housing some other way. And so that was the first meeting. We're going to have a lot more meetings. Uh, you know, hopefully something good will come out of that. Uh, I will stop there since we are so far behind schedule here. Let me stop the sharing. Um, so I think we are done with item two. Then we can move on to the consent calendar. Did anybody want to pull anything from consent?
I'd like to move the consent calendar, items three through five.
Okay, I will second.
Councilmember Chow.
Aye.
Councilmember Sinks.
Aye.
Councilmember Willie.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul.
Aye.
Mayor Sharp.
Aye.
Lucian Carey unanimously.
Great. So we are on to the next study session uh regarding policy options to reduce secondhand smoke exposure in Cupertino.
Can, can I just chime in? I mean, with us being so far behind, this would be one of the ones that I think would make sense to postpone it to another night.
We, um, you know, when we were setting the agenda, I discussed this as well, but um as will be explained, there, there was an issue that we could not postpone it. So I'll just hope, hope, maybe we can make this as brief as we can.
Well, we will be brief with this. Uh, we just want to make.
Speed through it, yeah.
Um, so Katie Nomura, Assistant to the City Manager, uh we have with us um consultant from the county, Leslie Zellers, who will be giving the presentation uh and presenting those options for you this evening.
Thank you, everyone. I'm sharing my screen. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Okay, good evening. I'm going to speed talk since you guys are behind and I know that you are already pros on tobacco control. You have seen me before. Uh, let's see, how do I advance the slides here? That is the one thing I didn't. Oh, here we go. Okay. So you know tobacco is, continues to be the number one preventable cause of death and disease in the country and the Santa Clara County Public Health Department has a tobacco control program as part of their Healthy Cities Campaign and there are various evidence-based strategies that they recommend. The City of Cupertino has now received two grants from Santa Clara County. As you know, last fall, you required a tobacco retailer permit in order to sell tobacco products and prohibited the sale of flavored tobacco after a robust discussion about that. And then earlier this year, you followed up with a prohibition on the sale of vaping products. So tonight, we are looking to get direction for the staff on policy options to reduce exposure to secondhand smoke. We're going to be talking particularly about multi-unit housing and outdoor areas. There is no safe level of exposure to secondhand smoke, according to the U.S. Surgeon General. It's classified as a toxic air contaminant and the Centers for Disease Control say the only way to protect non-smokers is to completely eliminate the exposure. This is a, a greater concern right now because everyone is at home. Um, they aren't going to their offices where there's clearly no smoking in offices. So now that more people are home um and they're inside more, even more now with the fires, um the county and other health officials are receiving increased numbers of complaints about secondhand smoke drifting into people's homes. The potential options to consider are requiring smoke-free multi-unit housing, entryways around buildings, public events, service areas and outdoor work sites. And I'll talk about each of those very briefly. When I say smoking, I'm talking about anything that heats or burns. So your traditional cigarettes and cigars, also vaping products and also smoking of marijuana. Those would all be prohibited in places where smoking is prohibited. So the first area is multi-unit housing. There are approximately 43% of Cupertino addresses are actually multi-unit housing, which is higher than I think um we thought. And according to, to the county, approximately a third of adults have smelled secondhand smoke drifting into their unit in the past week. We know that smoke can um transfer under doorways, through cracks and walls, through the ventilation system. There's lots of documentation about this. These kinds of policies will protect public health and they're also going to reduce the fire risk from a cigarette fire and also reduces turnover costs um for landlords. When we're talking about multi-unit housing, what we mean is any housing that shares a wall or a ceiling, so two or more units. That could be an apartment. It could be a condo. It could be a townhome, duplexes, or even attached single-family homes. We're not looking at the ownership status of the property. What we're looking at is can someone be at risk from secondhand smoke drifting into the unit? So it would be two or more attached units. The, one of the areas for smoke-free multi-unit housing is to require common areas to be smoke-free. Indoors are already required to be smoke-free under state law for most places, but um on the exterior, courtyards, walkways, parking lots are not yet required to be smoke-free by law, although many landlords have their own policies. A second component would be creating a buffer zone around multi-unit housing. We get complaints where um someone's standing outside my window, smoking. That's a problem. So we want to create a buffer zone around there. And it is possible for landlords to create an area on the property where smoking is allowed, a designated smoking area, if they have uh tenants or residents who smoke. The last area for multi-unit housing is inside the unit itself, which would include balconies and patios. Um, Cupertino is not the first place to consider this. There are four cities in Santa Clara County, as well as the county unincorporated area that have laws on this. There are more than 60 laws across California that require 100% smoke-free housing. Next area is entryways. Cupertino already prohibits smoking in outdoor dining and within 25 feet of restaurants. But the best practice is actually to have a smoke-free buffer zone around all buildings that are, that are smoke-free. So when you go into a store, this avoids having to pass through a cloud of smoke as you enter or exit the store. Um, so it would be things like grocery stores, retail, places of worship, offices, things like that. There would be a, a smoke-free buffer zone around them. Smoke-free public events, um things like farmers' markets, parades, music events. Obviously, we're having fewer of these these days. People are not gathering in public as much, but it's, it is still a best practice to make those areas smoke-free where people are around others. What we are doing a lot more of these days is waiting in line for basic services. Here's an example of um your average grocery store. So this is another area that could be smoke-free, smoke-free service areas where you line up to receive a service, whether it's waiting for the grocery store. More traditionally, it was things like ATMs or transit stops. Smoke-free outdoor work sites. So if you are a white-collar employee and you work in an office, there is no smoking where you work. Restaurants, there's no smoking where you work. But if you are an outdoor construction worker, there are not any limits on smoking. So this would be a way to protect employees who work outside. The last area I want to talk about is not a best practice, but council had asked staff to investigate the possibility of smoke, prohibiting smoking in private single-family backyards. I think you received some complaints about this. So uh we researched this issue. It is untested. No other community in California has a law like this. There is one community in Placer County, the City of Rockland, that considered this and abandoned the idea for a couple of reasons. Enforcing it is very difficult, um if you're talking about something that's going on in someone's private backyard. And also it has a potential unintended consequence of driving people back inside to smoke, which may create a greater public health risk. So there are often a lot of questions about how these kinds of laws would be enforced if you're talking about people smoking inside their homes. This would become part of city law, so technically it would be a violation of the municipal code. But landlords would also add it to the lease. There are smoke-free requirements in many leases already landlords choose to do that. And so it would be treated as a violation of your lease, like any other condition. If you have a pet and you're not allowed to, if you have loud parties. So it would be enforced in the same way. There's nothing particularly special about it. Most of the cities that have addressed this have a phase-in period, maybe six months, to give landlords time to add it to the lease and also to give the, the jurisdiction time to educate businesses and landlords about the new law. It would be complaint-driven. They're not going to be people proactively investigating people's homes to see whether anyone is smoking. And in the other communities that have adopted these laws, they have found that education and potentially warnings are effective in encouraging compliance. Another really key component is a lot of signage to let people know that these areas are smoke-free, and the county would be able to provide those signs free of charge. Uh, staff would be doing outreach on this. Uh, the traditional methods, another online survey. We had a lot of good success with this when we looked at the restrictions on youth access to tobacco. And I think online surveys are even more critical now that everyone's doing anything, everything virtually. We would also host a couple of community forums to get input from stakeholders. And there would be two mailings, one to all residents in advance to let people know this is what council's potentially considering, how to provide input on the survey and, and how to provide input on the policy options. And if council adopts a policy, there would be another mailer to help educate people. So this is a way to protect residents, employees, and visitors from secondhand smoke. And when I was here last time, um, Councilmember Chow was concerned about what is Cupertino's grade on tobacco control? The American Lung Association issues grades. And after your policies that you adopted last fall, she was disappointed that you were only up to a C. So this policy would get Cupertino all the way to an A grade. And that would be something to be proud of, as well as protecting public health. That's it. I sped through, so please let me know if you have any questions or you want me to pause on anything.
All right, thank you. Um, yeah, we can bring it back to council, um, to see if there's any questions or comments. And I, uh, well, first I have one speaker from the public. So why don't we have that person speak first? Welcome, Carol Baker.
Thank you, thank you very much. I'm an ambassador for the American Cancer Society. Oh, wait, wait, can you hear me now?
Oh, yeah, we hear you.
Oh, cool. Okay, I'm an ambassador for the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network and co-chair of the Santa Clara County Tobacco-Free Coalition and a sixty-year resident of Cupertino, which I love Cupertino. But I do have this one addition to the multi-unit housing section of the wonderful ordinance as you're considering. It just isn't fair to tell a young new worker at Apple or any other businesses in Cupertino that they must purchase one of the very few single-family residents available in order to protect their family's health. If a house is not available, or if they simply can't afford one, they should not have to put up with dangerous secondhand smoke. Please protect all Cupertino's residents, not just the ones in single-family homes. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, back to council now. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
I have a couple of questions.
All right, go.
Okay, so, uh, thank you very much for the presentation. Two questions. My first question is, do you have a breakdown of, um, housing types and number of units? You know, so, so a specific sub-question I have is, uh, we actually live in a single-family attached, which most people will look at and think is, is essentially a townhome, but that's a little bit different, right? So I, I'm just wondering with regard to the units you're including in the statistic that forty-one percent are, uh, multifamily units, what all is included in there?
And so that data does include, uh, the single-family attached homes. So anything that shares a wall or a ceiling and floor. The exact breakdown, we are working on getting that data. These estimates came from kind of a county dataset. And so we're trying to get something more specific to our GIS system.
Okay, great. And, and I, I think we would have time to accumulate that data. So, so that's a, a question slash request for, uh, I'm presuming this is coming back to us, so.
Absolutely.
Move our data on the next time. The other question I have is, um, uh, regarding the, um, our, our peer cities, particularly in Santa Clara County. But if you have Bay Area or certainly, you know, statewide data, what, what does the matrix look like, uh, for, uh, other jurisdictions? You had mentioned that no other jurisdiction in California had done anything about single-family homes or, or not single-family homes, but, um, outdoor workspaces. What, what do we look like vis-à-vis our peers? Is, is that a matrix that we have available to us?
Yes, I believe that was either attachment A or B.
Okay, great, great, great. Yeah, I apologize for that. I just, I got to the staff report. And so, um, I'm just gonna take a really quick look. But, but you, okay, perfect, that's, that's perfect. Thank you so much. That's it.
Okay, anybody else? Uh, I, I have one question. Do we know of all the rental apartment complexes in Cupertino, do any allow smoking now?
I think we don't know the answer to that. I have worked with a number of other cities who've considered these policies. And I've done surveys, I've called, um, large apartment complexes to get a sense of how many of them already have a policy. My experience is that the newer complexes and the larger complexes are one hundred percent smoke-free from the beginning. What usually is not already smoke-free are things like the duplexes, the fourplexes.
Right.
You know, the mom-and-pop smaller units. And it's often that maybe they have a long-term tenant and that, you know, they're concerned about changing the policy. But we have also heard from landlords in some of these communities that they actually appreciate the city taking action because then they, they can point the finger and say, oh, it's my idea, the city made us do it.
So you mentioned, um, it would have to be added to a lease. But I know for many apartment complexes, you get a one-year lease and then it's month-to-month, and there is no lease anymore. So it's almost like they'd have to put the person back under lease if they wanted to implement this.
No, actually, it, that's, that's, you're absolutely right. That's the way it works. And so it would just be a thirty-day notice period. So when you're month-to-month, the landlord can make any changes, um, to the lease with thirty days' notice. And then that's the lease, that's essentially the lease moving.
Right.
Those are the terms, they just continue to roll over. I mean, any, anybody could quit with, with thirty days' notice.
I hope so. You mean, quit smoking or quit the apartment thing? Or both?
Win-win.
Okay, okay. Um, anybody else? I don't see any other hands raised.
I'll, I'll make a.
Okay, go ahead, John.
And that is, you know, on some things, it's good to be out and in front of, you know, some of the other communities and lead the way. But I think when we're dealing with, um, issues that really would affect some residents, I think we need to, you know, try and understand, uh, as much as we can. And with that, the question is then, with this type of program, and actually, how close is it to anything that has been, already been approved? Sunnyvale, Mountain View, San Jose, Santa Clara? Have the, has this already been approved in these? Has it shown that it worked as opposed to how much it impacted? Maybe it needs to go just part of the way, not the full way, uh, all at once? What can, what can we hear about how it's already been applied?
Yeah, that's a great question. So the, the four cities that have done exactly this for multi-unit housing one hundred percent are the city of Santa Clara, Sunnyvale, Palo Alto, and, um, the county of Santa Clara. And I'm missing one. But they have gone one hundred percent smoke-free. And it's been really quite successful. And it, I think it was because of a lot of education upfront. What we've learned is that fewer, just under ten percent of people in Santa Clara County smoke already. So we're talking about the vast majority of people don't smoke to begin with. And the few people who do smoke, many of them don't smoke in their home anyway. They don't want the smell, they want to protect their kids. It's just a habit they have. And so the number of people who are actually affected by these laws are quite small. And, um, what's happened is that the, the law has been paired with education about, here's the new policy, and also opportunities for, here's how you can quit smoking, cessation services. So they have been remarkably successful. And in fact, it's something that tenants are starting to ask for as, as an amenity in terms of when they move into a, a, a new complex.
So, um, just to expand just a little bit, you know, I said, you know, maybe not all at once or something. So multifamily is one aspect, but you're also discussing the outdoor, uh, work environment and also buffer areas around other buildings. Again, these are things that, that, you know, would impact people and making sure that we understand what those impacts are and how they're received in the other communities. So have the other communities also, uh, done those?
Yeah, if you take a look at the matrix, you can see exactly which communities have the smoke-free buffer zones around buildings. Outdoor work sites is the one thing that is not on that matrix, and there are three other communities. I would say that's the one that the fewest communities have done. But the buffer zones is quite common. There are more than a hundred in California. And it's actually already part of state law to have a buffer zone around government buildings. And so it's quite common to see this, um, in other commercial districts to have the smoke-free zones, twenty, twenty-five, or thirty feet. It's actually been very positively received in other cities. There are a lot of people who complain that, you know, back when people walked around, that they didn't want to go to certain businesses because they were affected by the smoke. I think the public events and service areas are also eight or, I'm just checking my notes. It's in the PowerPoint, I think eight or nine other cities in the county. So that definitely is something that a lot of communities have done as well.
So when we start talking about the buffer zone, you know, I think currently, you know, entrances to workplaces inside, it's a twenty-foot, I think. And so when you toss out several different numbers, twenty, twenty-five, thirty, to what, to what number are you proposing for us? And what number is done by the other communities that have accepted it? Do they go the, the largest number or, you know, where, where are we?
So it is a, it's, it is a bit of a mixed bag, so thank you for clarifying that. The state law for government buildings is twenty feet. All cities in Santa Clara County have done at least twenty-five feet. Some have done thirty feet. So I'm pretty sure this information was in the staff report. But if it's not in there, I can get it for you. There are about half that have chosen twenty-five feet and half that have chosen thirty feet. There are, there's published research that talks about how smoke is dispersed in outdoor areas. And the minimum recommendation is twenty-five feet. The communities that have done thirty feet, that was really based on public input, that they said, oh, I don't know, I'm not sure that's far enough. I'd really like a greater protection. I'm not here today proposing a specific number. I think that's something that we would also ask the public about to get some opinion before making a recommendation and bringing it back to you with some options to consider.
Great, thank you.
All right, um, next, Liang.
Hello, hi. So, um, the staff report says, um, the multi-unit apartment is defined by, let me find the section, two or more attached residences that share a wall or floor ceiling. Um, now we are having ADUs that could be detached or, and not detached, and it'll be unattached. So are they considered multi-units? Would these rules apply because multiple family units might live in the same site?
Great question. We actually had that question and we looked into it. And the answer is they would not be covered by this ordinance, ADUs. They would be excluded.
And so this county ordinance would exclude that?
Right, the other cities that have done that exclude, um, ADUs that are part of a single-family property.
Right, the property owner could restrict smoking though.
Correct.
So the property owner, when they sign lease, or they can impose their own rules, smoke-free on their property?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, but some of these multi-unit apartments are, are gated, right? So in terms of enforcement, the city can go in to enforce these rules anyway. It's similar to a single-family home?
Well, it's, it's like any other thing. I mean, you have to have smoke alarms in your home. There are certain requirements that are part of the law. And the, the way, if you actually got to enforcement, it would be, I would say, my neighbor is smoking. That's a violation of the lease and the city law. I would take it up with my landlord first. If I don't get any relief from that, I might complain to the city. The city might potentially send someone out and do some education first and say, do you know that smoking is prohibited? And this is a warning that if you continue to smoke, it's, uh, potentially a citation.
So we would expect the apartment manager to enforce this kind of rule first?
Absolutely, yeah, there would be key partners in this.
Okay, and then, I, yeah, I actually don't see the difference between a single-family home and the apartment because both are private properties. Apartments are private properties of that particular landlord, too.
Right, the difference is that if you're talking about just a single-family home, then there is nobody bordering you.
You have, well, single-family home could be very close to the neighbor. Depends, um, we have, single-family homes are very, that are very close together, right? Like, uh, Darcy's case, it could be, single-family home was, that's detached. Even if not, they could still be very close. That's why we had complaints of neighbor, um, that's why we have all kinds of setbacks because people are kind of close to each other. But anyway, so there is no rule right now. And then how about, so we are, with this ordinance, people won't be able to smoke even inside their own unit?
Correct.
That means if someone were a smoker, they cannot smoke inside their own apartment at all if they are in Cupertino?
Correct.
And we invading someone's right?
No, um, this has been looked at by other cities. There is no legal constitutional right to smoke. What the city would be doing is making a choice about protecting the neighbors who are being exposed to that smoke. So in order to protect public health, the restriction, it's a restriction about where you smoke. It's not saying that the person can no longer smoke. It's saying that they can no longer smoke in their unit if their unit borders someone else. So they would need to go.
How would you enforce that? How would you enforce that since this is going to happen inside?
Yeah, so, so that's what I was saying, is that this is complaint-driven. So if, if there's no complaint, then it's not a problem. But the public health department receives many, many complaints about people who smell smoke coming in or are able to breathe that smoke coming in. And I'm sure if this item comes back to council, there will be, um, residents who can tell you their first-person experience.
They'll smell something, but they cannot prove what's really happened inside. It could be from cooking, it could be from anything.
Well, I think cooking smells different from tobacco smoke. But you're, you're absolutely right. We aren't gonna, no one would be proactively going in to investigate. It would be if a tenant is saying that they have a problem with this, then they would first take it up to the landlord. The landlord would educate them. The city could potentially go out and help educate them, provide them with resources about quitting smoking. And we're talking about, again, a very, very, very tiny minority of cases because the vast majority of people don't smoke to begin with.
And smoking includes marijuana smoking, right?
Correct, yes.
So I thought a lot more people are doing that right now. And forcing all of them to smoke outdoors?
Or use edibles, something that doesn't generate smoke.
Right, okay, thank you.
Okay, so there is a part in the staff report that says, if desired, um, the city should, uh, can require apartment to have, create a designated outdoor smoking area. So are you asking us to decide if we want to require that or not?
No, not tonight. I think the idea is, would you give, the, the question is, can you provide staff with direction about what policy options would you like them to explore? And then we can come back to you with specific recommendations at that level of detail. You can say, this, this looks like something I'm interested in. We can have that as part of the survey and we can get some additional public input and do some research on that. So you don't have to say tonight, absolutely that you want that or don't want that. It's more to provide some direction to staff about which areas do you think are worth exploring?
So the, our work tonight is there are five options you have, uh, put in the staff report. So we should give direction on. How deep of each options, like the work site, the service area, the public events. So we should give direction on each of these five. To say, do we want to pursue that?
Correct. And it could be as simple as, you know, we do want to explore all these options and then we'll go research and do the outreach on those, those options.
I'm still concerned. Then that means a smoker, okay? They cannot ever be a renter. They have only. Someone who is, they have their own house in order to smoke or, I'm not promoting that. I'm just trying.
No, that's not true.
The. How limiting we are of people's behavior.
No, we're saying that they have to smoke somewhere else. They actually can continue to be a smoker. They do, nothing about this law requires them to quit smoking.
Not at their own home. If they, anyone wants to smoke at home, they have their own house.
Well, again, this is, this is the public health trade-off to protect people from exposure for the, from the secondhand smoke. That they have no control over that smoke coming into their unit that's affecting potentially their breathing and their health.
And so outdoor designated area, is there guidance like how far away since the smoke travels?
If the desire is to make sure we include some research on outdoor smoking areas, then we will do that.
Okay, um, can we move on to Rod?
Thank you. Um, I, I think we, I mean, without getting very specific, and I don't think you're looking for that tonight, I think we ought to. Follow the example of Sunnyvale, Santa Clara, Palo Alto, Los Gatos, um, for example. And, and consider, uh, modifying our policy. You know, uh, we've just suffered through about a week of a hundred and seventy, uh, AQI air. That's the equivalent. Many people, uh, being outside, uh, for any length of time. Really notice how it impacts their, their, uh, respiration and the truth is it's impacting their cardiovascular health. And as the, as our experts have said, there is no safe level for particulate matter, uh, combined with the toxins that accompany cigarette smoke. Um, vaping is not, is also of course an issue. We've heard a lot about. Uh, and, and this council has taken action on vaping to its credit. But I think it's time for us now to consider multifamily housing, recognizing there is no safe level. But just to give you a comparison, the going rate for. Hundred and seventy AQI, if you were exposed over the course of a week, say for twenty-four hours. That's the equivalent of smoking eight cigarettes, right? So imagine that, uh, in a multifamily housing unit, the, uh, the, there's. An air system that gets shared between these residents. I think we all know what cigarette smoke smells like. We know what marijuana smells like. And the, the, the truth is, right, that it, once you're in a lease, um, it's, it's hard to, uh, protect yourself if your neighbor is smoking. Um, I think we ought to also look at, somebody talked about cooking and that also creates a lot of issues. This council, I will remind you, um, passed, uh, reach codes for new construction. Specifying that new, uh, cooktops be, uh, induction or electric at least. And I think, you know, uh, everything we can do to improve the health of our residents and nerves to the benefit of. Of, uh, society at large. I recognize there's a liberty issue here, right? Some people would, would like these options and then we just have to, we have to make a call, um, on behalf of, um. General public health and I, I'm, I'm in favor of. Moving this forward and then, yeah, seeing what pushback we get. We may have landlords that say, are you kidding me? And we may have renters that say, no way. Uh, I think we probably have people on both sides, but I, I think we should. Entertain that conversation. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Rod. Um, yeah, all that go what Rod said, I don't see why we cannot be to the same level as, um. Los Gatos and Palo Alto and. Well, yeah, those are the two examples that, uh, are all filled in on your chart. So, um, yeah, I think we should move forward as well. Um, Darcy, you have anything or did you already go? I can't remember now.
I, I did go, but briefly, there are, uh, five items, uh, listed on page two of the staff report. I think for, um, the purpose of conserving our resources. The fifth item requiring outdoor work sites to be smoke-free. I think it's a good idea if we don't proceed with that right now, but items one through four. Um, essentially everything that is in the grid, uh, that is not, uh, filled in for us at this point. Um, would be good to, to proceed with in terms of the investigation as well as, uh, the, the, the public outreach that was suggested earlier. I, I, I don't know if there's a majority with regard to, um, dropping five from the list at this point, but I think that it would be a good idea.
I mean, what, what is the reason that you would not want to do the, um, outdoor work sites?
Well, no one else has done it successfully. I, I, I don't want us to be the lost leader in it. I, I, I might, I think it's gonna, I, I don't think it's unproductive time, but given the fact that we probably won't get to that point. You, you know, look, if, if, if you want to investigate it, um, I, I can, I can support that. I just. Don't think that it's going to, um, generate, uh, new legislation from us where.
Well, I mean, our staff report says Campbell, or I'm sorry, uh. They've done this in Los Gatos, Palo Alto and Saratoga, right? So it'd be at least interesting to hear what their experience was.
You mean the outdoor work sites? I'm not saying.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's on the, on, on page five of the staff report where it talks about, uh, item five, smoke-free outdoor work sites.
It's just not on the.
Currently prohibits smoking outdoors. Okay, so, so what was I hearing in, in the, um, presentation?
No, that was backyards.
Oh, backyards and single-family.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, got it.
Which is interesting because there's a city councilman in Saratoga complaining about. Smoke drifting over the fence into his backyard.
Okay, okay. No, that's fine. I, I mean, if we have three jurisdictions in our county that are already doing it, um. Was not such as, okay, okay, that's fine. No, I'll, I'll, I'll support all five then.
I mean, this is a study session. Um, um, we can take a vote on all five.
No, no, I, what I, what I mean is that I'll support proceeding with the investigation of all five to.
Okay, right, right. We're not making decisions here.
We have to notice the public and do the outreach, right? I mean, that's essential.
Can we consider an option to maybe let the apartment owner decide whether they want to make that apartment a smoke-free apartment or not? I'm concerned that we are, on the one hand, we are telling people. You are not allowed to be concerned about the radiation in your home. We have to force it on you. On the one hand, they will say, oh, smoking is so bad for your health. You are not even permitted to smoke in your own home. Even though there are other, other things that's bad for your health. So are we going to tell everyone not to sit in front of you?
I, I wouldn't compare, I wouldn't compare those at all.
I, I, I think, I think apartment owners already have the right to do that.
Government overreach. So I think that's allow the apartment owner, some apartment, maybe they would permit that. And people who choose to rent there could rent there knowing. This is the rule of that apartment. Then there, at least there are some options for people to go. Any smoker have to own a house. That doesn't make sense.
That's status quo, right? I mean, apartment owners have that right now to decide.
We are making that if we adopt this, they don't have the right to say.
All, all we're doing is studying it.
It's a study session, so please let us go out and do the outreach and ask them.
That's why I say I'd like to look at that option of allowing each apartment landlord to decide.
You don't have to look at that option right now. We haven't even done any outreach.
Right, it will be studied. We will talk to all, the staff will talk to. All the apartment complex owners in the city presumably are the large ones and to, you know, ask what they think about that. Yeah, there may be. There may be extreme opposition to this. Um, and they may say, hey, you know, we're telling our potential renters. That we allow smoking here and if they don't like that, don't rent here. But yeah, let, let the staff do the outreach and do the study session. We're not making the decision right now.
Okay.
Yeah. And I, I'd like to finally just go on the record for future purposes to note. Um, that I, I would be in support of examining, um. In the future, you know, possibility of looking at what we can be doing in our single-family residential context as well. Um, I, I, I realize it's probably a matter of coalition building and, uh, reaching out across jurisdictions. Uh, but just since we have Leslie and Katie here, who have been working on this on, on behalf of our, our city and county. Um, just, just something, uh, of note that, that there is some interest at least, uh, from, from our council to look at this in the future.
So to clarify that, um, for the purposes of this, we're program item in this study, we're going to focus on the five, but. Sure we should keep in mind, single-family?
Yes, I, I just wanted to go on the record, uh, as saying that, you know, looking at single-family, I would not be averse to looking at that in the future. And again, you know, I, and I'll point out that we clearly have a majority of people that are okay with proceeding with five. And so I, I would ask the mayor, you know, proceed to the next item at this point.
Right, yeah, if there's no other comments, we can.
So for the single-family home, I would like to study that also specifically, maybe a certain setback from property line. Um, so it's, it's permitted in an open area in a single-family home, but maybe a certain distance from property line.
Okay.
Is there, is there a third for that so that we understand whether or not we're pursuing that at this time exactly?
Oh, so if you're, what, if you're pursuing?
The single-family backyard.
Yeah, to clarify, someone, someone said that this would force people to smoke indoors. No. In the backyard, there are a ton of places where simply say certain distance from your neighbor, that's all.
I wasn't suggesting it.
I think the attorney said that.
No, I, I wasn't suggesting that we study single-family, uh, issues at this point in the primary. I just suggested that I'd be. And looking at it in the future.
But.
I think we need to focus on the five.
Yeah.
Yeah, so before you go looking for a third, make sure you have a, a second. Can we move on to the next segment?
Yeah, great, yeah, we need to, thank you, Darcy. Okay, we are on to second reading of ordinances. This is the second reading of ordinance number. Two zero dash two two zero zero municipal code amendments. To regulate short-term rental activity in the city and other minor for, minor clarification edits in title nineteen. Application notes MCA two zero one, twenty eighteen oh two. Applicant city of Cupertino, location citywide. Um, let me see, we don't need a, do we need another staff report now since this is the second reading? Probably not. There are no attendees.
I do have one email to read, Mr. Mayor.
All right, go ahead and read that email.
From Jennifer Griffin, dear city council, can the city receive the full amount of hotel occupancy tax or short-term rentals? Is this charged daily or per month? Hotels. Uh, you know what? I think this is for number eight. Sorry, nevermind.
Oh, okay, okay, I see, okay. All right, so if, um, no one wants to.
No, I'm sorry, she does have, she did send one for seventh as well.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, dear city council, I am wondering what the status of the city hiring the outside vendor who will monitor the short-term rentals is at this point. Has the city found a vendor who will monitor the short-term rentals if there are any issues of compliance? Or they need to contact the owners and they are not available? Will this vendor be shown on the city website and will the phone number be made available? Will they contact the owner if they need to get ahold of them? Is the city getting cost recovery for this? Is this? I think it is too good to have this monitoring service engaged by the city. It will prevent Arinda residents from happening. Thank you, Jennifer Griffin.
Okay, thank you. So if there's no, oh, somebody raised their hand, hold on. Okay, go ahead, uh, Liang.
So I think we received an email regarding the short-term rental fees for people who might only rented occasionally.
That's the next item.
Oh, that's not this one, okay.
Right. Okay, so, you know, I will ask the city clerk to conduct the second reading.
You're on mute, Kirsten.
Thank you. This is the second reading and enactment of ordinance number two zero dash two two zero zero. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Cupertino, amending title three, revenue and finance. Chapter three point one two transient occupancy tax, revenue and finance. Amending title five, business license and regulations, chapter five point zero eight, short-term rental activity. Amending specified chapters of nineteen, of title nineteen, zoning of the Cupertino municipal code, chapter nineteen point zero eight definitions, chapter point. Chapter nineteen point one two administration and chapter nineteen point one two zero home occupations to regulate short-term rental uses in residential zoning districts.
I'm going to make one motion to cover both, uh, parts of it. I move that ordinance number two zero. Dash twenty-two hundred be read by title only and that the city clerk's reading constitute. The second reading thereof and part two, I move that ordinance number two zero dash two two zero zero be enacted.
Great, I'll second that.
Council member Chow?
Aye.
Council member Sinks?
Aye.
Council member Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Sharp?
Aye.
Mission carries unanimously.
You're on to item eight, considering amending the fiscal year twenty twenty twenty-one. Fee schedule to establish a new fee for short-term rental registration. Um, we have our staff report.
Yes, good evening, council members and honorable mayor. Um, so Katie Namura, assistant to the city manager, here to discuss the short-term rental registration fee. Can everybody see my screen okay?
Yep.
Perfect. So as some background, at the last meeting, council approved. An appropriation of two hundred eighty-three thousand approximately to cover enforcement costs and the third-party monitoring that was discussed earlier. Prior to COVID, we had about four hundred STRs. Currently, we have around two hundred. It's slowly rising. Uh, our latest number was around two hundred and fifty. Uh, so we're using three hundred STRs as our basis for this analysis as an estimate. So for a full cost recovery fee, that would include the third-party system, the enforcement costs. And then two hundred eighty-six dollars per registration for the staff time for processing and review. And that, uh, totals to a fee of one thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars. However, council can choose to adopt a fee that is less than full cost recovery. And subsidize the remaining amount from the general fund. So at, at a minimum, um, if this were to be a desired option, we are suggesting to include. At least the cost for the third-party system and the staff time involved in review and processing. And this would result in a four hundred dollar fee. This is a survey of other cities that do have a short-term rental registration fee. Uh, they range, uh, up to one thousand three hundred twenty-five dollars and that's in South Lake Tahoe. Um, there was some commentary about a kind of tiered structure for a short-term rental. Fee at this point of the city surveyed, only South Lake Tahoe has one and they base it off the number of occupants. Uh, given that at this time, we don't have the evidence to say that a one-room STR would. Require less enforcement than a three-room STR. Uh, we don't have enough data to base a tiered fee off of that. There is the possibility that we could pursue a tiered fee based on their, uh, the benefit they receive. So theoretically, an STR with more rooms could receive more revenue. Um, so there is an increased benefit. However, we would recommend pursuing that in the future if desired, uh, so that we have the accurate data. From our registration process to know how many rooms there are, so we know how to appropriate those fees. Staff is recommending full cost recovery, given that that is council's past practice is typically to have full cost recovery. Um, it would be beneficial in this COVID time, uh, given our uncertainty in our finances. However. Uh, a higher registration fee could be a deterrent for STRs registering. Uh, but again, we do have that enforcement piece that, uh, will be, um, making sure that people are compliant. Um, so this is really a council decision of whether they would like full cost recovery or lower. Thank you, that concludes the presentation.
Okay, thank you, Katie. I guess my. I guess my concern is that one thousand two hundred thirty-two is way more than almost any other city. Are they funding enforcement through the TOT that they receive? Or do they have like an extra fee per night for short-term rental that would fund it, or how does it work?
So it's, again, it's a city decision on whether they do full-cost recovery, and in other cities, they may choose not to, in which case they would subsidize it with the general fund. And TOT does go into the general fund, so it could be argued that it's TOT, though TOT doesn't directly get tied to an expense.
Right, okay. Yeah, I'm a little bit torn on that. It seems very high, but on the other hand, you know, we shouldn't be subsidizing, you know, we shouldn't be subsidizing this with general fund money, really. It's not, not right to do that. Okay, Rod, why don't you go first now?
Yeah, thank you. So if I understand correctly, right, we apply our TOT, which is the same for hotels as long as somebody's in less than thirty days, is that right? And that, remind us of what that rate is?
I believe it's twelve percent.
Yeah, so we're, we are collecting from the homeowner, I guess, no, it's paid by the renter, right?
It's a transient occupancy tax, so it's the renter that pays.
Okay, so it's quite plausible, right? If I'm renting for months and months at a time, I'm, I've, I've got a rental agreement with a lease. I'm not going to take Airbnb's overhead to do that, I assume, right? So we really are focused on these particular cases where somebody is using a home in lieu of a hotel room. Is that fair?
Yes, these are for short-term rentals of thirty days or less.
Yeah, I just think, you know, given what other cities are doing, I think the twelve hundred is too high. I think it's an opportunity for non-compliance. I don't, you know, I don't know, i- if we can't administer this program for less than twelve hundred dollars, I suggest we pare it down. I mean, honestly, it's, it's, it feels very usery, especially given what other cities are charging. I wonder what their costs are, and I don't, do we have any data on how much it costs other cities to do this? Given the level of enforcement they're finding necessary?
So I will say that our council chose kind of the mid-level of enforcement, so semi-proactive. Other cities are choosing to be strictly reactive, and so it's complaint-driven.
Well.
And again, we can always adjust this as we move forward.
You know, I know we've had a few problem cases, and we want to deal with those with and be proactive with those, but I also feel that, you know, floating this all the way up to twelve hundred is the wrong idea. This is a brand-new thing. Starting there feels prohibitive to me, and so I could support four hundred, I guess. But I would also like to see us review the program in a few months after I'm gone. Homework left to the students, and, and, and really see if, you know, an enforcement more in accord with a four hundred dollar actual cost is sufficient, because at twelve hundred, I just feel like, yeah, we're, we're inviting people not to comply, and it's going to be hard to, it's going to be hard to sort out when they don't. Despite your efforts, I think people are going to figure out how to not be detected at that kind of a rate. It just feels too much. Thanks.
Okay, Liang, go ahead.
Do we know what's the average range of revenue that people make from STR? So I'd like to see what would be the percentage or four hundred dollar be a percentage of how much of revenue they will get?
So in the staff report, we did include kind of the nightly rates, but we also pursued additional information even after posting. And so we found that of a three-year average, STRs in Cupertino made about three hundred fifty dollars a month. The top fifty.
How much a month?
Three hundred and fifty dollars a month on average.
That's it?
I will say that the top ten STRs in Cupertino were making an average of sixteen hundred dollars a month.
Okay.
And, but just know that this is past data, and so it is possible that with our new regulations where we do limit entire home stays, that could change.
So even four hundred is kind of high already. And the twelve hundred is including code enforcement. Likely if the, the owner is proactive in keeping things following the rules, there will be no code enforcement, no code violations, right? But then we are, if we charge twelve hundred, we are forcing the good people to cover the cost of the fuel violators. That doesn't seem to make sense. So I'm wondering, is it possible that we say we collect a fee and a deposit? If you have no code violation complaints, then the deposit would be returned to you, something like that. That way, they have incentive to make sure that that they're, they have strong rules to select good tenants and make sure the tenants follow our quiet hours and all these things.
So I would have to turn to the city attorney in terms of whether we can do such a deposit type of fee, or whether that would be considered a penalty?
So just to, are you saying that you would like the fee to be based on whether enforcement actions are necessary, basically?
There will be a basic fee, and then there will be a deposit, and if they don't.
Yeah. I.
They get the deposit back.
The way I've seen some fees set up is that there's a basic fee, but then if there's additional inspections or enforcements required, you can charge for those additional inspections or enforcement actions. Covering that upfront as a deposit, I suppose you could establish that. It, it might be more difficult to administer, but you could do that.
Be difficult administratively to return the monies later and do that annually.
But I don't see a legal reason why you couldn't do it, assuming.
Let me clarify. So for any code enforcement actions already, we are recovering the cost by any of the fines that we give out, right?
So why? I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily consider that cost recovery. Perhaps Philip Wilcom, our code enforcement officer, could speak to it more, but I know that the amount of time that goes into enforcing a certain violation could take much more than the one hundred dollar fee or penalty.
And, and, you know, right now, let me just interject here. I think we all have in our minds some egregious situations with STRs.
Yeah.
And so what I don't want to do is put in all these things to kind of fix that problem, because it really was this one. I mean, out of two hundred and forty STRs at the time that we looked at, we didn't, we had not even a handful of violations. And that one was, of course, the most egregious one. So, you know, that's a pretty small percentage, and so I don't know that we should be putting a bunch of prevention in for something that now is going to be permitted, so that alone will give us some greater control.
Okay.
Wait, let me clarify. So we are estimating for code enforcement, two thousand and eighty hours of code enforcement. If we are not expecting a lot of violations, why do we estimate such large number of hours? Which resulted in the extra eight hundred dollars in fees?
Well, you chose the, the council voted in last time to go with the a more medium proactive. There was proactive at a high cost, kind of proactive as a medium cost, and then a complaint-based, which was the lowest cost, and council chose the middle one. So.
And set up our contract so that we use what is necessary and treat that dollar amount as an up-to amount. It's, the real root of the issue here is that it's unknown. It's really unknown what the true cost will be until we implement the program.
If I can add something here. Philip Wilcom, Senior Code Enforcement Officer. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I wanted to just shed some light on this initial period for enforcement is going to, to make sure that all the STR operators across the city are registered with this program. Currently, they are not. And so, so we, we estimate that this initial period, we need enforcement help to get everyone on board of this program. And further down the line, we can reevaluate the program to see if, you know, we still need the, the same amount of enforcement, or if we can, you know, curtail that or tailor that to what we need.
Okay, I kind of remember, I thought we picked the option that's complaint-driven, right? Did we pick the option that's?
No. The council had picked semi-proactive. And like Philip mentioned, is, it's this implementation period where we're trying to get registration compliance, because once someone is registered, it's much easier to enforce the rest of the regulations. And so it's very possible that in the future, after initial registration has occurred, that it won't be an issue, and we won't need to have as much enforcement costs moving forward.
Okay. But we're still, if we don't set it at that level, essentially, we're subsidizing it with general fund money from all the residents who don't do short-term rentals. And yes, I, I mean, it's incredibly high, that twelve hundred, but remember, you know, it's voluntary to have a short-term rental. You're taking business away from our hotels when you do that. But, you know, that said, I think twelve hundred is a little extreme. I don't know if we could do a rollover or something. If there's no violations, then they don't pay it the next year or some, or something like that.
Can we do like two phases? Maybe we don't do enforcement the first phase and encourage everyone to voluntarily register? And then if it doesn't work out, or we provide some intense incentives for, so that if they voluntarily register, they, they get a discount in registration fee, right? And but if they don't voluntarily register before a deadline, they have to pay the regular fee, which will include the code enforcement cost. So that's do a first phase, voluntary registration with a discount, and then if it doesn't work, then we can say, okay, we now need enforcement, then we look at maybe additional increase in fee because we now need enforcement.
So what that sounds like is that you are proposing we have a lower fee initially effective at a certain date, and then effective at a later date, that fee increases? So they have up till a certain date.
It's like maybe we have an eight hundred dollar or twelve hundred dollar fee, but four hundred dollars for everyone who voluntarily register on a certain date. And after twelve hundred is still a lot, but maybe a higher, let's say eight hundred. And then after a year, they still don't register, then we'll assess, okay, now we need enforcement, that's do assessment of enforcement cost, then we raise the fee to include, to cover the enforcement fee. So we do cost recovery when we actually take action to do the enforcement.
So they'd have, I mean, you can't have a fixed date. You just have to say within a certain number of months after beginning to do the short-term rental, they have to register for four hundred, or else it's going to go up to twelve hundred.
Yeah, something like that, then that would encourage them to. And then if everyone registered, well, we can assess next year, we find, oh, we don't need twelve hundred, then we can set the regular fee of six hundred, for example. Because every year we can reassess, right?
Correct, you can reassess. We look at the fee schedule annually.
I mean, you know.
I'm starting to get a little concerned. So we have to, the fee has to be tied to the reasonable regulatory costs of the city of setting up the program and enforcing it. And so, and you can't have some users subsidizing others, although you don't have to be specific for each for each individual fee payer. So just be aware that if we're setting up different fees for different groups, we need a justification of why the city's actual costs for one group is higher than the other. And I believe the date of the registration will be difficult to make that justification.
No, I don't think we're talking about a specific date more than a number of days after they begin listing it. But the other, I mean, the other issue is, you know, somebody could have a short-term rental that they rent out, you know, eight days a year, and someone else could have one that they're renting out three hundred days a year, but they're paying the same fee, which doesn't seem right.
And that, and there's an option to base fees on the benefit conferred by the permit granted, and so I suppose you could, if you wanted to go that route, your permit could limit the number of days that you allow the short-term rental to be rented, and then you can get different types of permits for how many times you want to rent it, and.
So that's exactly what they do in Los Angeles. I know because my nephew has a short-term rental, and he rents it out probably two hundred fifty days a year. And the city of Los Angeles said, oh, if you want to rent it out, you know, so, you know, to such a large extent, then the fee is much higher. But if you're only renting it out a few days a year, the fee is much lower, which I, you know, I think that, you know, that would be a fairer way to do this, because, right, twelve hundred dollars to someone who, you know, rents a two hundred dollar a night thing ten days a year? I mean, that, that's absurd.
I think Stephen has a good point.
Renting it every day of the year, it's different.
I sort of wonder if we could have people pay a fee. If we, you know, and then offer a refund, right? It's like a deposit. We were talking about before for small cells. Could we have people put in a deposit and then capped at the, the real, our real actual cost, right? You can't go above that. I understand that. But do you have any ability then to to then have a calculation based on number of nights, well, or revenue collected or something like that? So it's a percentage? So it, it would rise linearly with usage or with with the amount paid up to a point, and then be capped at our, our actual fee, our actual cost.
In that instance, though, the refund would be coming out of the city's general fund, probably, right?
Well, I don't know. I mean, honestly, right? We're already collecting twelve percent. There's a significant benefit coming to the city. It just seems to me like.
I, I'm just pointing that out in that structure.
You know? Yeah, however, however we would administer it. But I agree with Stephen that, you know, maybe one size doesn't fit all here, and yes, we have to be fee-based, and we can't recover more than it really costs, but twelve hundred dollars is a lot, and even four hundred dollars, if you're only doing it once or twice, seems like a heck of a lot.
So I guess you're saying that if we can't yet do it by the number of rooms, perhaps we could do it based on number of days people expect to rent out?
Yeah.
And I'm not sure if staff has any feedback from an administrative perspective on that.
Of the, of the options, doing it based off of revenue would probably be the most likely, the most readily available information. Number of days can be a little bit more difficult. And even that, I'm not exactly sure, but we can try.
Works for me.
It's already kind of based on revenue because that's the TOT.
TOT tax, it could be twelve percent. Now it's twenty percent, so.
No, it's. We would have, we, we need, we would have to take that to the voters, I believe, right?
No, I mean, the fee would be a percentage of their proceeds.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I'm suggesting to you, but capped at what our actual, you know, our real maximum cost is. So for some units that didn't rent very much, we wouldn't do a full-cost recovery, and on some that really maxed it out, we would.
When does the fee become a tax and have to go to voters?
When it exceeds the city's reasonable regulatory costs.
That's why I wouldn't go there. Yeah.
Right.
It sounds, though, like if, just to move this along, that, that there might be a consensus that the fee is too high for certain permities and you'd like staff to come back with some kind of explore tiered structures and there's various ways that could be done and come back with a proposal. And, and I'd just like staff to comment on, you know, whether you feel like we have time and ability to do that.
Thanks, Heather. Um I think what would be most realistic, you know, the council, you're free to do whatever you think is best. But if we're able to adopt, perhaps you adopt a lower fee this evening. And with the next, so then we allow the program to run for a few months. And then at, at the next evaluation of the fee schedule, which happens uh prior to July 1 of next year, we can explore this kind of tiered structure once we have more information from all our STRs.
I think that's a reasonable request. I mean, nobody's asking me, but I'm saying.
So I'm still thinking that if we provide some kind of incentive for people to voluntarily register, then like they will get a um discount if they register by a certain date, because that reduces our enforcement's cost, right? And that's a cost reduction for us, so it justifies the reduced fee, right?
I'm not sure that actually reduces your enforcement costs. Because enforcement here is, is making sure that everybody who's been required to register actually registers. So it's the enforcement, and correct me if I'm wrong, Katie, I don't think the bulk of the enforcement costs are going out and checking violations at this point. It's just, it's, it's the actual contractor's work to survey the system um and make sure everybody's uh do, is, is registered. And Katie, if you want to jump in and let me know if I don't quite have that right.
I'll, I'll allow our senior code enforcement officer to speak to that.
Yes, Heather, you're, you're correct. The initial period is to, to get everyone on board with this program. Make sure of, of the STRs that we are aware of, they're currently registered in this program.
And I will say that the way this is set up is there's a significant disincentive for not registering because then you're operating an illegal short-term rental and the city can, can go after you. For that.
We can ask for those listings to be removed from the platforms.
But then we are still talking about an active enforcement, which will cost the city $249,000 if we are charging only the $400 fee. So that's why I'm asking, let's not do the enforcement and find a way to lead, encourage involuntary registration. That way we charge lower fee, but doesn't cost the city extra for enforcement.
So this would be going back to the tier, to the first option in the last study session we had, that would be complaint-based enforcement.
Yeah, for the first year, since we are doing the lower fee, as to complaint-based for this year.
You could, I think you can change that decision, right?
Oh, so I, I wanted to say one thing. I, I, I looked up the LA rule and it's, they only charge $89 to register for up to 120 days of rentals a year. The extended home sharing for year-round renting is $850 a year. Uh plus you have to be registered for six months or have hosted for 60 days with no citations. So I kind, you know, they've kind of bought this through. You know, you, you couldn't even register for the year round if you had any citations for violating the rules. So I'm not.
I'm liking, I'm liking that, that, I mean, it seems like uh we don't have to reinvent the wheel. I mean, something like that.
Right. I mean, we, we could say, okay, it's going to be $400 for up to 60 days a year. And then, you know, I, I don't know. I mean, I'm not going to rewrite the whole thing.
Provided there are no citations, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I like the incentive to keep your record clean. I think that's, that's good, too.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm not sure if you're past the question and questions at this point, but do you want to hear from the public? We have one.
Sure, okay. You have something written or someone would raise their hand?
Jennifer Griffin has her hand raised.
Okay, Jennifer, go ahead.
Yes, mayor. Uh my uh device has actually cooled down. So thanks, thanks to Kirsten. She's been a real lifesaver. So um I'm just going to read initially and then I, I have a few comments. Uh can the city receive the full amount of hotel occupancy tax for short-term rentals? Is this charged daily or per month? Hotels for either day and steward rental? The occupancy tax collect the same way? Does city T O T may use? This might be an avenue for T O T.
Jennifer, you're breaking up terribly. We can't.
I can read it for her. So uh can the city receive the full amount of hotel occupancy tax for short-term rentals? Is this charged daily or per month? Hotels rent by the day and so do short-term rentals. Is the occupancy tax collected the same way? Does the city get T O T from ADUs? This might be an avenue for T O T from ADUs for the city. Are ADUs considered short-term rentals by the city and can the city get revenue from ADUs?
So we're not allowing ADUs to be used as short-term rentals. The T O T is charged on your, whatever your hotel bill is, um as a percentage. Right, you do pay it based on whatever cost you're paying per day. So, right, what there's, we have no, since an ADU can't be a short-term rental, there is no T O T on it. Personally, I didn't agree with the fact you can't use an ADU as a short-term rental, but I mean, that, that's what we decided. But yeah, I'm not. I mean, do we have to decide this today or can we send this back for more studies? Should we just do the, the, you know, choose a lower fee for now? But then we'd be subsidizing the rest of that enforcement cost.
And I, I will say that we will make the enforcement contract kind of an up to amount. So it's going to be based on what the actual need is. It's possible that maybe it will be less. But it's unknown at this point. We'll know more in the future. Um and so we can do the lower fee and in less than a year, we're going to be reviewing the fee schedule again and we can come back with that uh data we collect during the registration process.
So are we enforcing it ourselves or are we hiring some company to do it?
So for this initial period, we are doing contract code enforcement because of the ability to ramp up and down depending on the need. And then also the, the fact that uh we don't know what the ongoing need will be. We know initial implementation may require more staff time. It's possible that maybe that need will go away once people have initially registered.
All right. Well, I, I mean, I could support doing 400 at first and, but sticking with the same level of enforcement, but coming back and look, relooking at this, but not, may, can we do it in less than a year?
Oh, it'll definitely be less than a year. It comes back in May, I believe.
Well, then why don't we do something less? Why don't we start with 200, say? Because it's going to be a partial year, you know, and then uh consider a new fee come the start of our fiscal year after.
Oh, so is this a 12-month fee or is this like a fiscal, a calendar year fee?
It goes with the fiscal year. So when you review the annual fee schedule, you'll get to revise it if you wish.
Okay.
That comes to council in May, becomes effective July 1.
Right, okay.
I mean, the other thing, right, is we're, we're not, we don't have a lot of demand right now. So I think, you know, we also say we're giving people a break. I mean, Liang talked about this. We say 200 until the start of the fiscal year and it'll be something different then. We'll have a different program.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good point. With COVID and all, maybe, you know, we can start with a lower fee and then ramp it up if necessary.
So does somebody want to make a motion?
So wait, so are we still have, do we still, are we still on the hook for the consultant, outside consultant for code enforcement? Of, I think, 240.
Again, we, we won't necessarily spend all of that. It just really depends what the need is. But we want to be able to have that capacity if the need is, if the need is there because we don't want.
It's based on actuals with a not to exceed. It's based on actuals, on actual usage only with a not to exceed. So you're not still on the hook. We're just allocating. So can we just set them out in case there's code enforcement?
Can we just do complaints based and not on use of outside contract?
We could do that. Um I will say that we do recommend putting our best foot forward in the initial phase and then we can ramp down after that. But if, if the program is unsuccessful because of poor initial registration compliance, it makes the rest of the regulations very difficult to implement.
Yeah, I, I vote for doing it right, but I think we would be a little tone deaf to start with a really high amount, frankly.
Yeah, I mean, on, on a quarterly basis, we're getting 100,000 in revenue. In the quarter that uh staff recited, we got 15,000 uh for March through May. I mean, the, the revenues are really dropping and if you kind of calculate it out, what's being proposed for full cost recovery is basically a, a good half of all the revenue that is brought in. Um so I, I just don't think the money is there to, you know, get the full cost recovery at this point. Um so I, I, I would bring a motion um that we that, that we, that we make this a complaint-driven process uh and that we set the uh initial uh, the initial amount of two, uh $200 a year for the fee. So sorry if my terminology is off. I'm not.
Oh, yeah, you have to adopt the resolution, right? This isn't an um ordinance, right? This is just a resolution.
It's a resolution.
Right, okay. So it's resolution 20 dash 038, if you want to make that motion.
20 dash.
20 dash 113.
Oh, why am I looking at, am I looking at the wrong?
Probably the file number.
Oh, okay, yeah, well. No.
So the resolution 20 dash 113, what is that, 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 what is that tied to in terms of a number uh for the amount of the fee? Is that, is that, uh fill in the blank there, basically, or?
Yeah, to fill in the blank of what fee you would like to adopt. And then if you do adopt a less than full cost recovery fee, we do have to add a whereas clause uh that includes language that the council has chosen to adopt a fee and will subsidize with the general fund.
Right, okay. So yeah, I, I had a recital. Um that'll be my motion that, that we um adopt resolution 20 dash, add a, add a fee uh set at $200 per year. And that we add a recital uh specifically indicating that this is not full cost recovery and um the rest of the funds come from the general fund if needed. Uh and, and that we also uh turn this into a, a reactive process, to use the the uh, the term that you used in your August 18th uh staff report. So also saying, you know, this is tied to um the amount, but this is an estimated amount. I, I, I'm not really sure, you know, um if, if we were really to put in a little elbow grease and doing, do a mailing, you know, this is not, this is not reaching out to our, our, our 60-some-odd-thousand residents, right? This is reaching out to 200, no more than 400. So I, I just, I, I, I respect staff's estimates, but I, I, I think that there is definitely a lot of wiggle room here in terms of the ability to reach out to a relatively limited subset of people.
Well, and Darcy, I'll second your motion, but I think, to be clear, right? The $200 covers the period from whenever this actually takes effect until the end of June. Is that your intention?
Yes, for this fiscal year.
For the remaining part of the fiscal year.
That's correct, yes.
So it's on a prorated basis, it's more than 200 a year, but.
Oh, so Kirsten, maybe I'm reading this wrong, but I see where you said 20113, but then I'm looking at attachment A where it says user fee resolution number. Oh, 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 we're amending that. Okay, we're amending that with 20113 is what you're saying. Okay.
That was the second, right?
Yes, that was the second, yes.
All right, let's vote.
Well.
Council member Chow?
Yeah, I, I'd like to at least uh weigh in uh very briefly, you know, go on the record that uh I say that uh we can, we cannot expect the uh residents at large to be subsidizing, you know, a program like this. We want to get from point A to point B. And if we take a, a small hit in getting there, you know, I'm okay with that. Long-term wise, the program has got to be able to uh fund itself or I can't support it. So we say that we do that. I do like that it's complaint-driven. Uh Councilman Paul, that's a, a great idea. Let's keep the fee uh down. But at the end of six months and then by all means, at the end of the year, it's got to be self-sufficient. We cannot be uh, you know, using our residents' tax dollars to fund something like this to subsidize uh for these few. So with that being said, you know, let's get on with it.
All right, Kirsten.
Uh, okay, so Councilmember Sinks?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mayor Sharp?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Wonderful. Okay, it's 9:36. We've been going for um about two and a half hours. So why don't we take five here, come back at like 9:42?